Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 9. Getting started a little bit late because we had a couple of work session items that ran a little longer. And it's been awhile since we've seen you because the weather has kept intervening. It tried to intervene today, but we did not let it. So our next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 23 at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. As always, if you have comments or questions, we encourage you to call in. Our call-in number is (769) 1677. And as always, you can watch us live or later on in on-demand webcast on both PCTV76.org or on Verizon and Cablevision TV. I had a couple of announcements to make. The first is I'm literally just an hour ago back from the annual legislative meeting of the New York Conference of Mayors in Albany and have lots to report. I will need to put that together in a little more orderly fashion and we'll go over that at our next board meeting and probably will also do a PCTV show just to update everybody on matters that are going on in Albany, particularly as relates to the current budget discussions that are going on in Albany and how they might affect the Village of Pleasantville. Lots of interesting stuff going on, some of which I think has dark implications for the Village of Pleasantville and worth everybody knowing about it, obviously amid the upheaval in the New York State Assembly with departure of the Speaker Sheldon Silver. Nobody is quite sure exactly how this season of budget negotiations will go, but there's lots to be reported and I will do so. Wanted to mention a couple of things that have happened recently in the Village of Pleasantville. One is, I don't know how many of you are aware that Will Shortz and his partner Robert Roberts have established a couple of years ago the Westchester Table Tennis Center over on Tompkins Avenue. And it has emerged as the biggest table tennis center in the United States. And as befits the biggest table tennis center in the United States in the best village in the United States, it hosted this week the grand finals of the North American Tour. There were 16 seeded table tennis players, including quite a few from other countries who were playing for a North American championship. And as a result, the Village of Pleasantville and the Westchester Table Tennis Center on Tompkins Avenue was the center of the table tennis universe in North America Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this week. So, pretty cool stuff. I encourage anybody who's interested to take a look. It's really quite remarkable to think that world-class athletes are coming to this mecca in Pleasantville and competing at an extraordinary high level. It's, as you perhaps know, if you've seen it all on television, quite hard to imagine how people can hit a ping pong ball that fast and actually return it. But, great stuff going on and congratulations to the Westchester Table Tennis and also to Eugene Wong of Ottawa, Canada, who was the winner. Worth also noting that one of the quarterfinalists was Kai Zhang, who is a young man from China who is living in Pleasantville and is currently a sophomore at Pleasantville High School. So, he is, again, a seeded player and one of the leaders in North America. So, great stuff going on in the Village of Pleasantville. On a sad note, many, many people in the community attended a memorial service on Saturday for Shane Howe, a young man who was a Pleasantville High School student who we lost a couple of weeks ago. And I was reminded at that event, as I have been reminded so many times in the past, what this community can mean, not only to families that suffer a loss, but to one another when people come together in such an outpouring of support to remember a fine young man. So, our sympathies to all. Anybody else have any announcements to make?
I do. Pleasantville Strong Coalition that was formed here in town in June is going strong. We had an event last Tuesday at Pleasantville High School where we had a member of the DEA come in and talk about trending drugs. We had a crowd of about 100 parents there, which was really great. Our next meeting is February 25th at Holy Innocence. And our next parent forum is March 3rd at the library where we'll be having an M.D. come in and talk about the physiological effects of drugs. I also attended about a week and a half ago a forum at Mount Pleasant that freshman Senator Terrence Murphy held on prescription drug, heroin, and opiate use. It was very informative. He brought together a lot of experts in the field and he's put together a seven-point plan to try and combat prescription drug, heroin, and opiate use, which is really grown, very much so in the north part of the county, but it is coming here as well. So, what he had to say was great. I was excited that he's new and had brought this forum together. And we look forward, our coalition actually is going to be visited by him in the very near future and working together with him on his seven-point plan. So, just thought I'd update everybody on that.
Great, thank you for that. And you'll hear quite a bit more about Pleasantville Strong over the next few months as that grant process that they're engaged in goes forward. They file an application in March?
Yeah, we file an application in March. We'll hear back towards the end of the year and that grant would give Pleasantville Strong $125,000 for five years to work on programs to reduce and eliminate underage drinking, drug use, and tobacco use.
Great, thank you for that. Also need to announce that in accordance with real property tax law, the Village Board has reviewed the list of unpaid property taxes, which total $280,691.35. And we have certified it as accurate. As is the case every year, there are always some property tax payments that are late and we encourage everybody on that list to get up to date as quickly as they can. Anything else? All right. Resolution 10, Colleen, the check register.
Resolved that pre-check register dated February 9, 2015, covering electronic transfer check numbers 1905 through 1958, and pre-check numbers 79743 through 79844 have been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below, coming from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Pool Fund totaling $294,295.26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the check register?
No.
I was just wondering, does this account for any salt and whatnot we've needed to bite into in the last couple of weeks?
It may have a delivery on there.
I think there was one, I was trying to find it before.
There's two. It's on page 12.
Thank you, Colleen. We've had several. We had another one on Friday.
Oh yeah, there it is. You're right.
There were two, yeah.
So, 193, yeah, okay. So, we're really doing that on a page-and-go basis, right?
Yes, we have a minimum requirement which-
It's budgeted, but it's fine.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it just records as you get a delivery.
Given what I heard about poor Boston, I just wanted to see-
Yeah, no, we're in good shape.
Okay, very good.
We're full again.
And by the way, with all this snow, DPW and the crew has done an outstanding job.
Oh, thank you.
Really outstanding and credit goes to Jeff and his entire crew.
I'm sure all of you feel the way, they really have, you know, they've labored very hard for us and it's been cold and difficult.
We cleaned this out of my house this morning.
They've really done a great job.
The storms are just lingering. They're out again tonight.
Right. We keep getting hammered, so.
Thank you.
Thanks very much to the entire crew. So, all in favor of the resolution to the check register?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Mindy, number 11.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, January 12, 2015, and January 30, 2015, and they are hereby approv-- although I can't move it if I wasn't there on the 30th, can I?
You can still move it.
It's all right, I can move it.
Absolutely.
So, I get aye on 12 and nay on 13.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Just, as is always the case when you go over the minutes, it reminds you of things that were mentioned before, but worth reminding everybody that there is a new music festival site, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. And lots of great stuff, a new and lively, engaging site. I encourage everybody to get to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com, not only to enjoy all the material up there, including some video clips, but also to mark your calendars for July 11 for the 11th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. Any comments or questions on the minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Steve, number 12.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints the following election inspectors for the Wednesday, March 18, 2015 Village Election. Salvatore Talio, Giovanna Talio, Guy?
Gay.
Guy, sorry, Gay Carnes, Connie Mizullo, and Margaret Limatoni.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, the election on Wednesday, March 18 is an election for the mayor and two trustees. And we will know by-
Tuesday.
Tuesday, what the ballot looks like. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Colleen, 13.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department to hold their annual fire department parade on Friday, May 29, 2015. And further resolved that no parking signs will be posted on Friday, May 29, restricting parking from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the following locations. Memorial Plaza Bedford Road from Martling Avenue to Marble, Manville Road from Grant Street to Grove Street, all Grove Street, Edgewood Avenue from Washington Avenue to Grove Street, and Washington Avenue, both sides from Edgewood Avenue to Manville Road, Romer Avenue. And further resolved that Board of Trustees authorizes the police department to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll remind you again of those rules and restrictions when the day comes. It's always one of the landmark nights in the Village of Pleasantville. So, keep that calendar out that you are marking for July 11 for the music festival and mark Friday, May 29, not only for a great good time, but for a great night to honor the volunteers who protect us through the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, number 15, 14.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Mount Pleasant for the purchase of highway construction materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe that longstanding relationship?
And exactly, that's exactly what it is. We've been invited to participate in competitive bidding with the Town of Mount Pleasant. They prepare the bid specifications and all of the requirements and based upon the aggregate purchasing, we get a better price. So, the types of things that we participate in purchasing are usually road materials such as asphalt, stone, some piping, some winter sand, and calcium chloride. So, it's a very good intermunicipal agreement that we've had with the town for many years.
While we're talking about that, you may have read in press or other sources that Joan Mayberry, who was longstanding council member and then became the supervisor of the Town of Mount Pleasant, recently retired from that post and Carl Fulgenzi is the new supervisor and we have known him for a long time as well in his role as council member and look forward to working with Carl and the team, as well as wishing Joan the best in her retired state. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 50.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Treasurer to close the following capital account, H7997.201/14600 for a senior center vehicle transferring 65 cents to the General Fund on account of us purchasing said vehicle.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like those-
Now, are we sure it's not 66 cents?
You know, I wouldn't question Mary. She's got this down.
That's a good indication of the granularity of our-
So, the happy news here is that we had a senior citizen jitney bus that was getting a bit long in the tooth and not only was difficult to maintain, but also was not of the most modern design and not quite as accessible as the new one is. So, the new one has arrived and it was 65 cents less than we thought. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendment. We're increasing expense budget code A3130.108, police sick-time retirement buyout in the amount of $15,925.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is the completion of the longstanding story of former detective Robert Mazie, who is now officially retired. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 17.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Michael Newman, Recreation Leader, to attend the American Camping Conference in Atlantic City, New Jersey, from March 16 through March 19, 2015, at a cost of $200.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, my question is, how can you be in Atlantic City from March 16 to March 19 for $200?
Because that's what it costs.
I'm not really sure, but they know what they're doing and-
The hotels are like $13.95 a night.
They're hurting in the summer now.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so, they're just trying to get anybody in to gamble and spend money elsewhere.
Well, at any rate-
No, it's true.
But this is a big, this camp thing is a big, big event. I'm just, I'm shocked that-
Well, good news. Mike Newman is very much involved in our day camp program and his supervisor Linda Balfaro and all of us are confident that this will be a worthwhile opportunity for him to get some new ideas and see how it's done elsewhere. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, number 18.
18. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the Village Clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, February 23, 2015, at Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue in Pleasantville, at 8:00 PM prevailing time, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-60, Parking Prohibited at All Times as Follows. And the "as follows" is amend Chapter 173 dot six, no, dash 60, parking prohibited at all times, deleting the street name Manville Road on the north side from the intersection of Grandview Avenue east for 400 and, oh, sorry, east for 45 feet, and adding Manville Road on the north side from the intersection of Grandview Avenue east for 127 feet and on the same side, on the same street from the intersection of Grandview Avenue west for 70s feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Awkwardly read, but probably-
It's not, it's not an easy one to read.
Yeah, it's, do you want to describe what this is?
So, this arises because we've had a number of residents comment that when you are coming down Grandview Avenue and seeking to turn onto Manville Road, it is difficult to see around parked cars, especially when you're looking left, again, as you're trying to turn onto Manville from Grandview. So, we coned off several parking spaces in that area and it was universally agreed by all of us, as well as I think by the neighbors, that it was a substantial benefit. We will lose some parking spaces that are frequently used for teachers during the day, but believe that the safety improvement trumps that modest inconvenience.
The only thing, I just, you know, I've talked to a lot of people in that area and they had no idea that the cones were there just for that reason, that we're even thinking of this. So, if by chance you're watching, that's what we're thinking of, that this is the opportunity for you to come and talk about it, if you disagree, and that's what the public hearing is all about. So, I was just concerned that like four or five people knew nothing about it.
So, just to put this in maybe more visual terms, there's essentially going to be three parking spaces taken away from the east side. So, in other words, when you come out onto Manville from the left, and one parking spot taken away on the right, so that you have a better sight distance looking up toward the old village in case you want to pull out. We've determined, I think, through a bunch of different ways, that that is the optimal way to increase the safety and the sight lines there and take away as little parking as possible.
Or everyone could get a Suburban and then you're over all the cars.
Everyone, yeah.
I have no problem pulling out.
So, again, the motion is to post a public hearing that'll take place at our next meeting, February 23 at 8:00 PM. So, anyone who has opinions on that subject is welcome to voice them. I think I can speak for the group in saying that if you are in favor of it, we'd be happy to hear from you, but the Board is, I think, very sympathetic to this idea. So, our goal in the public hearing, I think, would be primarily to hear if anyone disagrees with the view we have so far established. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, number 19.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the Village Clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, February 23, 2015, Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, 8:00 PM prevailing time, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 166, taxation to add as follows. Section 166-32, filing deadline for renewal applications. In the event the owner or all of the owners of property which has received an exemption pursuant to this section on the preceding assessment roll fail to file the application required pursuant to this section on or before the taxable status date, such owner or owners may file the application executed as if such application had been filed on or before the taxable status date with the assessor on or before the date for the hearing of complaints.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, it'll be an exciting evening, February 22.
Shall we bring in Cots?
This shouldn't be controversial. This is really just, it's necessary because we have a lot of people for all different types of reasons missing the deadline when they are entitled to exemptions. So, this gives people the opportunity to get their paperwork in by grievance night.
Which is really the real deadline.
Yes.
And it now would be a good occasion to report that tax grievance night, which is a date set by the state, is a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, the 17th of February. It starts at 6:00 PM. They're from 6 to 9.
9 o'clock.
Are we going to do it at the Clinton Street Center again?
Yes.
So-
Those board here that night.
The Village Board serves as the Board of Assessment Review and we will be at the Clinton Street Center from 6 to 9 on Tuesday, the 17th, the date established by the state. You don't have to show up to do that, but if you are seeking to grieve your taxes, you need to have filed the papers by that day. And by far, the most efficient approach to this is to contact Phil Platts, our assessor. And his contact info is on the web, is it, Patty?
It's on the web.
Okay, on the website of Pleasantville-NY.gov. Anyone who is interested in coming to describe their case and their reasons for believing they're unfairly assessed is absolutely welcome to appear between 6 and 9, but that's the deadline for filing the papers and you do not have to appear in order to file a case. Back to resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 20.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Director of Senior Programs and Services to hire unpaid interns as follows. Jacqueline Guardio from February 10 through April 7, 2015. Sharnell Nelson-Mackenzie from February 10 through April 7, 2015. Mark Johnson from February 5 to April 9, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Happy news, Jacqueline and Sharnell are coming from the Merchant College Occupational Therapy Department. Mark is coming from Westchester Community College. Delighted to have their assistance. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 21.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Treasurer to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $251,595.24. Said amount includes $3,083.31, oh, God, I'll try that again, $3,083.31 attributed to interest paid by the petitioner and be further resolved that the Village Treasurer is authorized to appropriate fund balance in fiscal year 2015 and fiscal year 2016 to pay said surgiore settlement in equal amount of $125,797.62.
Is there a second?
Second.
Such a hit.
So, for those of you who have followed us with great attention over the last several years, this is a matter that we have been expecting to come to closure. Took a while for it to happen. Stop &amp; Shop was the former owner of the MLA site, now owned by Henkel Knife Company. And Henkel, if you haven't noticed, is already occupying the warehouse part that they have renovated and the completion of the office wing is coming along. They've been waiting for the cladding panels that go on the front of the office wing, but that is expected within the next couple of months, so that is nearly done. But Stop &amp; Shop continued to pay taxes on that property for a very long time and actually grieved the taxes only fairly late in their ownership. So, there were a few, a small number of years in play. It took a while to come to this, but that property was substantially over-assessed for reasons of history that have, I think, ultimately to do with the fact that MLA existed on that site under an Industrial Development Authority deal and had a fixed payment that was unrelated to their assessment and therefore it didn't bother them. So, at any rate, as Mindy reported, a big hit, but a hit we knew was coming and happy to pay that with the recognition that it closes that chapter and that property has now been returned to productive use for the village economy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 22.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Superintendent of Public Works to purchase a sweeper in the amount of $192,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Also, the subject of a long discussion, we are required not only by practicality, but also by law to sweep the streets as a means of reducing the amount of stuff that ends up in the stormwater system. Our existing street sweeper is causing us problems and the company that makes it no longer exists. We went through a fairly elaborate review with the assistance of Jeff Condon, our Superintendent of Public Works, to look at the question of whether purchasing a new street sweeper made sense, given the fact that there are also opportunities to outsource this activity from a third party in the end of the cost of outsourcing compared unfavorably with the annual cost of owning the thing. And we are convinced that this is the right thing to do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. So, we're just full of good news.
Right, well, here comes another one.
Yeah.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following parking permit rates for the 2015, 2016 fiscal year. The lot is the Plaza, it's all the lots, but first is Plaza Wheeler Cooley. The resident rate will be, go to $600 a year and the business rate will go to $650 a year. The Village Lot is 400, will go to $475 for the residential rate and $590 for the business rate. The Rebecca and Bedford Terrace Lot will be $380 a year to, and the business rate will be $480. And the Hopper Street will be now $250 for the resident rate and $350 for the business rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, these represent increases in the parking permit rates and obviously nobody is happy about having to do that. The reality we confront here is that our parking rates, even with these adjustments, are quite, quite, quite reasonable on a per-day basis and we're confronting the need to balance some of the fees to reflect what has happened in terms of development in the community over the last several years and as a result have increased a couple of these lots to be more in line with the rates at other lots. Anybody anything to add to that?
Well, it was a very long discussion and I appreciate the Board being very reasonable and working on some of the rates that I personally was not very happy with. So, it was a very congenial negotiation.
I think that's true.
And I think that these are a lot, represent a lot fairer increases.
The takeaway that I think everybody is, at least at some level, aware of is that we have lots of competition for parking. We have a downtown that has been thriving in lots of different ways, which is great news for all of us and great news ultimately over time for the tax base, but by the same token, it has created some new wrinkles in the demand for parking, which have obviously has been a story over a long period of time. The Board continues to look and will be thinking pretty aggressively over the next year about long-term planning for a possible increase in parking, but that is an expensive venture and in order to make that happen, that will be a combination of tax dollars, but also user fees, of which this is one example. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. At the end of our resolutions, anybody have any new business?
I just wanted to, in addition to our great DPW during this time and the weathers, our emergency services, they've also been, you know, through a lot the last couple of weeks and they've done a great job, our police officers and our fire ambulance corps.
No doubt. I echo all of that. For all of us, obviously, everyone was horrified by the recent train accident and the loss of life that took place in Valhalla. And I just want to thank residents of the Village of Pleasantville for the good humor with which they confronted the detours that took place the day afterwards. The folks at the MTA annoyed us a little bit with some late notice about their bus system that operated out of Memorial Plaza, but in addition to that little dust-up, I can say with conviction that the MTA team also put together a pretty impressive system and did so on very, very short notice. And quite a large number of commuters were ferried to and from Pleasantville by bus between Pleasantville and North White Plains over the course of that day and would have been the day following had it not been possible to restore train traffic. So, our thoughts, obviously, to everyone who was affected by that, not only the families who lost a family member, but also the people who were injured and the people who were a part of that- a part of that horrific event. There being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. Thank you. We will see you in two weeks on the 23rd.